Commissioner Billingsley?
Here.
Commissioner Childress?
Here.
Commissioner Headley?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
All right, we have quorum and this commission is duly open for the business of the county. So before we start, I will lead us in prayer and I'll ask Commissioner Bone to lead us in the pledge. You will stand with us? Oh, and if you will turn your phones off or put them on airplane mode, please. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the rain that you blessed us with. We ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct the business of this county. That everything will be done in accordance to your will and it will benefit everyone in this county. Father, we ask you to be with us as we leave here tonight and go home. Give us a safe journey there. All these things I ask in your name, for your sake, amen.
Amen.
Attention.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Do we have any additions or deletions? I know we have one. Oh, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Commissioner Hall. Do we have any additions or deletions now? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed, and it passes unanimously. Come down to organizational reports, Premier Holdings LLC. That would be you. Would you come to the microphone, sir, and state your name?
Jason Springer. I'm the general contractor, lead engineer, and project manager for Network Connects. We are the partner for Premier Broadband. We install, design, and follow up all of their installs for fiber to the home projects, middle mile, and backhaul projects across the southern part of the nation. Reason for today's meeting is the broadband initiative at the state level from the BEED program. So, part of our, part of the process is to go out and have community involvement. In these cases, in your state, everybody's bidding one county at a time or by the county. We have bid sixteen total counties. So through county commissioners' meetings, county sheriffs, town hall meetings, I'll gather up as much community support as I can. That goes into our bid package and everything that we turn in to the state. And then it goes back through NTIA for a final approval.
Is there something particular you're looking to this commission for?
No, sir, typically, this is a question and answer portion for any concerns that you guys might have for the project that's coming down the pipe. Now, I will lead into that saying that it doesn't, me being here doesn't mean that I'm gonna be the one building it. We may not win the bid. There, if, if the process works correctly in this, there could be up to twenty to twenty-one other general contractors or ISPs that should be going through this process.
Yeah, kinda like the, the project that's going on right now.
Yes, sir.
Grant process.
Yes, sir.
Well, you asked the wrong one for questions, I promise you. Uh, 'cause I have a few.
Fire away.
I think you might have answered the first one, what grant area are you pursuing? So this is a countywide?
Yes, sir.
This will be a countywide grant for the final mile?
No, sir, yes, sir, final mile.
For the in-home?
Fiber to the home. Yes, sir, and commercial properties.
Okay. Underground, overhead, or wireless?
We try to avoid the underground as much as we can. So our system design is try to stay about eighty to eighty-five percent aerial. Slows down the permitting process a little bit because we end up having to pay for all the upgrades and power upgrades that need to be done, make ready on the power pole systems to hold the extra wind loads and ice loads, whatever that may be. Once that process is done, in the long run, it's easier to service, it's easier to get back to. We try to avoid the underground and accept where I have to in some city towns, direct in town. I may have to do some underground work, but it's all coordinated with whoever the locals are in the city before we do it.
Okay. And what's the, what's the issue with underground? I thought that was the way most of them wanted to go.
It's cost, sir.
The cost of it?
Yes, sir, it is. We're, we're fighting a dollar against the, the state, just like everybody else is. And I can build, on average, I can build an aerial mile for about three dollars and eighty cents a mile, materials and everything, four-twenty in some parts of the nation, but it's upwards of about eighteen dollars a foot to put it in the ground.
Seriously?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, so what speeds are you projecting?
So, and there's a whole-
Is it in your handout?
There's, yes, sir, it sure is. And there's, and there's a whole box of these back here in the back if anybody else needs one to take with them for leisurely reading.
So you, while he's looking, you said the unserved and undeserved locations?
It's, they're titled as served, underserved, and unserved in the process. And, and basically what that is, is we get a map from the state or from the federal government with a bunch of dots on it. And each one of those dots has a title on it, a, a label that says whether that address is served already by high-speed internet to some grade, underserved, below the bar, or unserved, where they're having to use Leo-type projects, like a low-earth orbit, they may be running off of dish network internet or something.
So you're certain that you can cover the entire county?
Yes, sir, we don't, or yes, ma'am, we don't have a choice. We have to make it happen.
Because others have had problems serving.
Yes, ma'am.
That when it says, quote, the unserved areas.
Mm-hmm. So when we do our designs, I start off, before I choose the counties that I'm gonna bid on with these partners of ours, I spend a month in and out of these counties, driving and logging information, me and about three of my guys. And we put as much notes on napkins as we can over that thirty days. And from that, we design a, a trouble set, if you will. So everywhere that we think we might run into trouble, we put in a backup plan. So if the aerial doesn't work, what am I gonna have to do? Am I gonna have to directional bore a creek, a river, whatever am I gonna have to do to get pathway to there? Am I gonna have to come back to the county or the state and pay for a bridge access across it? Um, whatever that is, we try to build a what-if into every bit of it.
What if you run into an area that's under an ARDOF grant? Does that prohibit you from going into that area?
No, sir, it doesn't prohibit it. So, the ARPA grants and ARDOF and the other, like Mr. Perkins mentioned earlier in our conversation, I can't remember the other name of the other contract vehicle, but when we, if we're awarded this county, by the time they, they award us a set amount of dollars and so many passings on a map that we have to hit, it'll go through a process where my engineers and their team at NTIA will work together to find what is actua, what's a real address. We may, that might be a barn on a map that doesn't necessarily need to be covered. Or we might find that even though it wasn't documented by the federal government, everybody on this side of the street actually has one gig of service already, right? Well, they're not gonna prevent us from building there because competition is really what this is all about, to not have anybody corner the market for anybody. We will document that, give that information to them, and then they will tell us how we can overbuild our system. So we will build exactly what they tell us we have to cover, and then I will design expansion into it. Once we've covered the grant part of the construction project, then we will come back in and those areas that already had service by somebody else, now we'll make it about competition. Now, I will come back in and add another line that's not covered by the grants, privately funded, and give everybody on that side of the street, somebody else to choose some besides Project X or whoever they are.
So, did, I was, were you on that Zoom meeting with the DECA the other day?
Yes, sir.
I was too. I didn't get answers to questions I wanted because they didn't have enough time to answer questions. Mine was about the ARDOF, and I got one answer, but I didn't get the second one. ARDOF grant, CenturyLink has an ARDOF grant in the northeastern part of the county, and they're not fulfilling their obligation, and I can't find anybody that can tell me who's, who's holding them accountable. That's one thing I need to know is, are you gonna cross paths where this ARDOF grant is? Do you know that?
I do not know that because I don't know where the ARDOF map is, whether we are awarded this or not.
Most of it is showing on the map is unserved, but there's a part of it that's showing underserved. Now, if you go to the FCC map, it's saying they've got three providers up there and they don't have three providers. That, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I can't argue that without seeing the map. But what I am willing to do, whether we're end up being a part of this or not, and I can't speak for ARDOF, I can't speak for CenturyLink, but as a helping hand, if you'll send me an email or give me an email address, I'll help you get someone that can help you get that answer.
Okay, good. You've already given us more answers than that than we've gotten probably two years asking some of these last mile questions. Because last mile was the biggest concern, and probably maybe the only concern of households in this county. Are you coming to my house?
Present company excluded, it's, I'm not government, I work a little faster and smoother, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I had asked you previously when we got here a little early and he was, he was here and, and I asked Mr. Springer about, you know, one forty-five and all to the river and the areas that's not currently covered by a grant that we, that we may know of, or if it was a grant area that somebody else was not currently developing towards the river, if that would be covered, if he could, if that would bring broadband to that area. And your answer was?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a high likelihood that it's already covered in, in our plan. Without getting down to the nuts and bolts on it, I'm not gonna stand here and promise you exactly the location you're talking about is on my map, but there's a very high likelihood of it. What I can do is, theoretically, we win this, we win this bid in this county. What, what I like to do next is now we start getting into the planning phase. So as my guys are doing their engineering work in the background and trying to get this from an ultra-high-level view down to the ten-thousand-foot view where I can really start planning, then I'd like to, typically, I go out and I start reaching out to individual districts. I wanna go sit down with every district commissioner in their area and I want you to tell me what's covered in your mind, what's gonna give me problems, where am I gonna be able to dump two-hundred and loads of gravel at on Tuesday, you know, those kind of things? Where am I gonna have to have, where am I gonna have problems finding county water lines that nobody can remember where at on the map, you know?
We can hip you with the second one. First one, we don't have districts in this county.
Oh, you don't? Okay, okay.
But we can hook you up.
Okay, fair enough.
We can definitely hook you up.
And you do it on all of them.
Uh, and I do suggest anybody here that's interested, get one of these handouts because it appears the prices can go from thirty-eight dollars to eighty-nine depending on the package you choose.
That's correct, yes, sir.
That's very competitive. Uh, now, another question is, where's your customer service center? Arkansas or Alabama?
Right now, I have one in every state that we build in, every county that we build in. We build a storefront and a yard right there, that's, I'm the biggest. The reason I come to these things and not Premier Broadband at first is because I'm the one you throw rocks at for the next three years, right? I just explain to you how the sausage is made, and then when I'm done, you get their service. So, I'll, I'll buy a yard, build a yard, whatever I've, I've gotta do to do three, three-and-a-half years' worth of construction and a bunch of follow-up. And then as I get to the end of that, the meat and taters of that part, then they'll set up a storefront and have service guys in the counties.
Good. Comments, questions from anybody else? Well, you successfully answered every question I had, and I think-
And I will leave some cards with you guys.
Yes.
Please reach out. Even if I end up not being the, the winner on this deal, I'm gonna be in this state, it's inevitable. These states, there's probably twenty, twenty-one ISPs building on it. We bid on sixteen counties, I think. Every one of these counties are big, it's gonna, they're, they're thirty-to-fifty-million-dollar grants. So, it's a process, and the more people that get involved up front, the more headaches we avoid for everybody. So, if I can help you, even though I'm working in the next county over, call me.
Is, uh, is there a map we can find that's gonna show these areas? Because I couldn't find it on the DECA's website that specifically showed those areas, that's what I saw.
We can reproduce.
But I can get you one.
All right, I'll give.
There you go.
I will take one.
Fair enough. I'll just leave these up here for you guys.
All right.
Just let me one.
How much did you say per mile it costs you to do the aerial stuff?
It's between three and five dollars a mile on the aerial stuff, depending on what time of year I buy my materials and how much I can buy of it up front.
A mile or a foot?
A foot.
A foot.
I break everything down in a mile in my head, it just, because I build thousands of miles of fiber, so.
So four dollars a foot?
Yes, sir. As opposed to fourteen to eighteen dollars a foot to put it underground.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
It's a big difference.
Major.
That is a big difference.
Now-
That's another question, but it ain't your question.
If I had my preference, I would put every bit of it underground. Selfishly, I'm gonna make a ton of money. That's ideally. It's, I don't have to worry about my bucket truck guys, I don't have to train them to be linemen, I don't have to work in the power space. My liabilities are a lot less if I put it underground, I make a lot better margins.
At least you had a lot of water lines.
Yes, sir, and that's gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, that man sitting right back there, Chilton Water, he can tell you.
So, when we, when we come into a community, I'll usually break it up and I, you can tell I'm from up around Oklahoma, everything's broke up in districts up there. So, when I work in a county, I break everything up into districts, towns, communities, right? And I try to go meet those people. And in those towns, there's two or three people in every one of them towns that knows things that ain't on the books. And if I can work with them and if it's just a cup of coffee every Tuesday, whatever, I can solve a lot of problems off the books and figure out where things are. So that's typically the process I go through. And then, as we hit water lines, it's gonna happen. I make my guys stay right there with it and fix the problem with you, whether it's running parts, digging holes, whatever it is, so.
Right, good deal. Everybody satisfied?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, I appreciate the time, folks.
All right, have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
All right, next we have the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Motion, Commissioner Bone, seconded by Commissioner Childress. The consent agenda will consist of the minutes, the claims list for April the eighth, reclassification Sheriff's Department of Scott Barnes, uh, from full-time deputy to full-time correction officer.
Apologize.
Oh.
That's where I walked off. What do I need to do to get the minutes or communication of you guys, the, the support letter, whatever?
Ms. Sylvia?
This young lady right here?
Yes.
Uh, if you'll let me finish this, and we need a support letter, we'll have to vote to give you a support letter.
Fair enough.
Okay, uh, the, from the commission office, approve the donation policy and procedures for animal control and the same for parks and recreation. Approve the use of Venmo and open an appropriate account with signatories. Approve pay increase for Nick Varfield. Approve Veterans Affairs lease renewal for one year. Approve to advertise and hire a temporary janitor. Approve pay increases for Nick Boltland, Derek Wright, and Colby Ramsey. Approve new hire Lisa Thomas as full-time park manager. Hire a temporary assistant park manager and advertise and hire two park caretakers. Approve basket tournament contracts. Approve load of gravel to be delivered to animal control from the road department. Seven hundred and fifty dollars to be taken from oh-oh-one-six-two-one-two-one-zero-zero-zero. Uh, and resolution to send Roger Perkins to innovate Alabama Summit. All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Uh, then the consent agenda update on a meeting notice from our attorney, Mr. Ben Goldman.
Thank you, I wanted to correct an item from a couple meetings ago. There is a statute, it's eleven dash three dash eight, and particularly subsection B that prescribes the notice that's required for special call meetings. And what it says is, a county commission may schedule a special meeting when determined necessary in writing by a majority of the members of the commission or in case of an emergency upon call of the chair. The purpose for and agenda of the meeting shall be included in all public notices of the meeting and no other items shall be considered at the special meeting upon scheduling except in an emergency at least five days prior to the special meeting. Notice of the meeting time, place, and agenda shall be posted in a public and conspicuous location in the courthouse and other public buildings determined appropriate by the county commission and shall be forwarded to all local news media who have on file with the county commission a written request for notification of special meetings at the county commission. I had reported on a, a general notice provision under the pub, under the Open Meetings Act, but this is more specific to county commissions and applies.
All right. Anybody having questions on that? All right, thank you, uh, Ben. Uh, now, I would entertain a motion to provide, and you'd like to give me his name again if y'all have it?
Jason Springer.
Jason Springer, stuck his card in my pocket. A copy of the minutes and a letter of support for the BEED grant for Alabama.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Perkins, seconded by Commissioner Bone. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, commission office.
I'll be asking for a resolution to approve the sponsorship for WSFA Hometown News to the cost of two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I so move.
Motion, Commissioner Childress. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. Next, Ms. Sylvia.
Ask that we, a resolution to close the nominations for appointment to the Airport Authority?
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Bone, seconded by Commissioner Headley. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Uh, ask for a resolution to appoint, uh, for the Airport Authority, the term is to end November thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
That would be Keith Collins, recommendation of the panel. Do I have a motion to appoint Keith Collins to the Airport Authority?
I make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, do I have a second? Uh, motion dies for a lack of a second. Do we have another recommendation to appoint?
I'm about to recommend Doug Bass.
No, this is the airport.
Oh, the airport? I believe I don't have, uh-
I, I would make a motion that we appoint Jared Bates.
All right, do we have a second to the motion to appoint Jared Bates?
A second.
Uh, second by, motion by Commissioner Childress, second by Commissioner Billingsley. Any discretion? All in favor of appointing Jared Bates, let it be known by raising your hand. Hold your hands up, please, one, two, three, four. Jared Bates, any opposed? Any abstentions? Two abstained, one opposed, and Jared Bates is the appointed, uh, new member to the Airport Authority. Okay, next.
A resolution to close nominations for the Chilton Water Authority.
All right, do I have a motion to close nominations for Chilton Water Authority?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Childress. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
A resolution to appoint for the Chilton Water Authority, and this is the term to end April first, twenty twenty-nine.
Recommendation from the panel was Terry Jackson.
I'm, I move we appoint Terry Jackson.
Have a motion, Commissioner Childress, do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Hall. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously.
Ask for a resolution to close the nominations for the Chilton Water Authority for the April one, twenty thirty-one term.
Do I have a motion to close those nominations?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Childress, seconded by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And the recommendation of the panel for this one is Jeff Williams, it's a reappointment.
I move we appoint Jeff Williams
Second.
to the Water Authority.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, seconded Commissioner Perkins. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously.
Uh, this is the second meeting for the nominations for Central Alabama Wellness Board. Makisha Claykley has been nominated. Are we, do we have any more nominations?
Do we have any more nominations? Do I hear not move nominations be closed?
Move nominations be closed.
Motion, Commissioner Childress, seconded Commissioner Bone. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Can I have a motion to suspend rules?
I move we suspend rules.
Second.
Motion, second, motion, Childress, Commissioner Bone. Bone, seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Due to our, uh, procedures, this would not be, uh, voted on until our next meeting, but it, as we have only one nominee, I'm asking for a motion to appoint Makisha Claykley as our member to the Wellness Board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Commissioner Bone. Second, Commissioner Hall. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? She, she has awarded that position unanimously and she can go to her first meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, brings us to commission reports. That's it, Ms. Sylvia?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Billingsley?
Yes. I'm gonna be asking, I'm making a motion that we accept the RFP that has been updated by nine-one-one. And this to be sent out or posted immediately. This will, is a RFP, is a request for proposal for an ambulance service in this county. It's been worked on for-
All right, get up. You got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll sing, yeah.
Second, Commissioner Perkins, okay, now discussion, sorry, Commissioner Billingsley.
As, as I announced last night and even tonight, it's, this has been being worked on since before November. We really kicked it in gear in November, we had a nine-one-one board meeting immediately to get this done. It is brought before the commissioners. The, when this is posted, the day it's posted, they have thirty days. When I say they, I'm talking about ambulance companies. They have thirty days to get their proposal in. Seal bid, and this seal bid will come to this commissioners' board here and be opened at a designated time when that, the due time is. So, that's where we are, hoping we can get some bids. And so we will have a contract, and it's, it's based on a two-year contract. And now the way the RFP is, we'll have an ambulance service that we can depend on and, and cover the county.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Billingsley. Any comments?
I'd, I would just like to state that, you know, this has been an ongoing effort for a long time, been a, a, a lot of people aware of the need and the necessity, and, um, I would like to, um, uh, take my hat off to Commissioner Billingsley for doing a lot of work as, as, um, as down on the weather as you've been. And, uh, still trying to, uh, plug away and, uh, get this taken care of to try to get this thing out so we can get some information- so we can get some information back and move forward, have a, a reliable, uh, ambulance service in the county, it's, um, uh, that's a, it's a good job he's doing.
As I said last night, I had asked Commissioner Billingsley to take my spot on nine one one for this very purpose cause I knew he was probably the best man for the job since he'd been involved in the fire association in this county for forty years, probably. And, uh, he has done, he has done a remarkable job giving all he's been through in the last couple of months, and I applaud him and I really thank him for getting this done, and hopefully we get something back that we can have a contract for a dependable ambulance service, so y'all keep your fingers crossed for this. Thank you. Uh, now we need to vote, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, and of course that passes unanimously. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Billingsley?
No, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Bone.
Uh, the only thing I got is, um, Ms. Kathy has put on, uh, another event for Manuka Park coming up, this coming up weekend. So just letting the public know that we're gonna have a Easter egg hunt Saturday and Sunday, right? In a trade day. How many vendors do you have?
We have two one vendors listed that we're gonna have, um, Saturday and Sunday from eleven to five, and it's, we have some amazing talented.
Come up here to the mic.
We have some amazing talented people in this county, and it's like a lot of locals that's coming in and selling stuff that they've made by hand. Um, plus, you know, stuff like cotton candy, we're gonna have bouncy houses, we're gonna have an Easter bunny. And, um, we're gonna have eggs hidden in the trails for people that's riding the side-by-sides to find, as well as some in the parks, around the lake, just general. And we're gonna have prize eggs, so, you know, if we go, we gotta go big. Yeah, we're gonna have prize eggs that, um, people around, you know, local businesses have donated prize eggs, and it's anything from gift cards to jewelry and other things like that. But it's eleven to five, um, eleven to five? Uh, eleven to five Saturday, eleven to four on Sunday. And, um, we got food trucks and all too, so all y'all come out. Come shop, come Easter egg hunt, and just enjoy the park.
Very good.
Appreciate all the work you do, Kathy.
Yeah, you do a lot for us.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Bone?
That's all I got.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Childers.
Just a very short one, I, we've closed out the painting contract, I'll be delivering the final check on that. We're down to, uh, windows and, um, HVAC is being installed and, uh, we'll have five zones for control, so when the, when the shelter's overcrowded and Christina, the director, needs to move animals around, she can control the temperature and the airflow she needs to, and so that'll be a big help. And then, uh, uh, security system, uh, security cameras are, are coming up, so we'll, uh, we're making progress. Uh, once we get it all done, I'd like to have the county come by and just take a look at what their money is buying.
Alright, anything else?
And that's it, thank you.
Uh, I would like to comment.
I, I do have one, unless that was, that was on the consent group, the stone.
Yes.
Stone.
Yeah. Uh, for y'all don't know, uh, there's no telling how much money Commissioner Childers has saved us down there by basically being our general contractor, who's not a general contractor.
I was gonna say.
I was. Uh, well, we were under all our bid processes, so you saved us a lot of money. And the thing that impressed me was I had no clue about air conditioning until you educated me on zone air conditioning for that building, which is very much needed.
Well, it's not just the air conditioning, I mean, there's gonna be a high-flow system in there that, that will operate opposite of the, of the, of the HVAC unit. So if, if she needs to just pull fresh air from outside, there would be an intake and an exhaust fan that's, uh, that is gonna just increase the smell of that place wonderfully.
Okay, alright, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hall.
No, it, new updates, I'm good.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Headley.
Oh, yeah, I had two things, but, uh, the multi-purpose facility, uh, I'm gonna table it to the next meeting where I can get, uh, a little better resolution rolled up, a little more professional, and be sure I got everything right.
Okay.
Uh, but I do want to, uh, make a motion to, for the commission office to send the minutes to the Chilton County News when they send them to us.
Okay, now do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Billingsley.
Commissioner Billingsley got that by a fraction of a second.
Okay, any discussion? Oh. They would have to be completed minutes for publication. They'd have to be one we vote on. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I abstain, since that is part of my family. Okay. I don't like getting in orange. That'd be Commissioner Childers'. Okay, um, anything else, Commissioner Headley?
That's it.
Commissioner Perkins?
Well, well, I didn't, but I do now. So.
Would that be a change to the agenda?
No, I'm just, I'm gonna give an update real quick on the Rover Pass, uh, at the park. Um, as, as, uh, some people were aware, we passed the, um, resolution to sign up for a Rover Pass, which basically, uh, will, uh, go live hopefully this week. It will bring both parks reservation systems online, interactive, uh, on the web, the Rover Pass and our webpage. So, um, uh, tourists and, and attendees and customers and all, whatever that they're, that we wanna call them. Um, somebody going down the interstate looking for a place to stay and pulling us up online, uh, through Google, uh, find us, do the reservation, pay for it using the interactive map of the, of the parks, and, um, complete their reservation and just show up and check in. So everything's going live and interactive, hopefully, uh, you know, this week. I would like to, uh, congratulate and give my kudos to the girls in the office for doing a lot of hard work and sitting through some Zoom meetings that, uh, they had to attend, uh, with me and Bone at the same time in there. And, uh, uh, but, uh, getting a lot of work done and, and taking these maps. And then they had to take all the current reservations that were handwritten by Moses and put them into the system. So, um, we, we're, we are now up to date and, uh, it's gonna be a great, uh, great benefit to the county and, uh, it just continues the growth, and I do appreciate everybody's hard work on it.
Well, I came in the office and saw them working on it. Uh, Tiffany, do you have anything you wanna add to this? Since you were the one that put all these Moses notes in there? I do know that you two have some different names, so if anybody wants to know what they are.
I don't know, I, I couldn't hear.
I don't know what you're talking about.
She's not on a microphone, so.
Okay. Have to turn our mics off if you're gonna do that. Uh, anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
That's all, thank y'all.
Okay, uh, update on, uh, Senate Bill one ten. I think the efforts of ACCA and the staff and a convergence of commissioners on Montgomery, SB one ten, will not damage our roads. The weights, uh, the upweights for log trucks was taken out, and we were assured down there today that the House would not be changing the version of it. So hopefully that's gonna stay as it is right now. Uh, and I did go talk to the mayor, as y'all asked me to find out what the city, uh, was, what they would be willing to do on County Road forty-one. And, uh, mayor said as far as he concerned, make it thirty-five for the entire road. So if we're gonna change the speed limit on our portions to thirty-five, we'd have to have a resolution, just as they'll have to have a resolution to make it thirty-five on their portion. So if anybody was willing to put a motion up to make it thirty-five or forty-five, then I will entertain a motion.
I had a call about the road from somebody a little down, said.
Well, we'll have to have, we'll have to have a motion first, anybody wanna make a motion, forty-five or thirty-five?
I'll make the motion for forty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for forty-five. Uh, any discussion on that?
What is it now?
It's forty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five.
So all the way.
It is a roller coaster of a speed limit that's been an issue backing forth for a while. And I don't care what the speed is, just, I'm, you know, it needs to be consistent from one end to the other, and I don't think it matters too much with the city either way. So we have a motion for forty-five, any?
I do have a, a comment, I, you know, the only calls I've had about it was, uh, and I'm trying to parse exactly what they said.
You get a second? Yeah, second, yeah, yeah.
They, 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 they prefer that it not be changed, but the change that they understood was that the speed limit was gonna be dropped. So now that there's a motion on the table that it should, it could be raised, I, I'm not real sure what my citizens would be, what their, yeah, um, so I'll have to, I'm gonna have to think about that for just a second. But the, uh, but I will say personally, I think that that, that road will handle a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. It is quite a distance between Loves and thirty-one. Uh, it's probably already at forty-five anyway, practically.
I think the majority of it is forty-five.
And if you drive it, I drive it, and I drive, actually I do drive thirty-five in there, I get passed regular. And they're not, and they're not going that much over speed limit, they're probably running forty-five when they pass me, I drive like an old man. Okay, we have a motion.
Our two trucks are old enough to go thirty-five.
Okay, uh, all in favor of the speed limit being on the county's portion of forty-five miles an hour, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna abstain, how many votes you get on that? Three.
Had four?
I'm, I'm voting against.
Okay.
I'd like to, I mean, I.
I've had some calls and, all the calls I've had wanted it lowered and not bumped up, so.
Well, either way, it's consistent, I don't. Okay. It was four in favor, any opposition?
Two abstained.
One, one.
I abstain.
I abstain.
One abstain, one opposed and two abstentions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and a motion passes. Okay, uh, and he still hadn't got, he hadn't got all the quotes, or they quote on the caution light at twenty-two, so I don't have anything to report on that as of yet to see if we want to.
I had a question.
Can I, I've got, I've got a question.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll open the floor up for discussion on that.
How long's it been down, do you, did, did, did I miss that part?
It's been down, I forgot how many, uh, weeks, three weeks, four weeks?
A little longer than that.
Has it been longer than that?
Yes, a little longer than that. The caution light's been out a minute.
I, I don't recall the.
Well, it was brought to my attention, it was brought to my. No, uh.
It's been out before Ruffey's came, it has been out.
It's been a minute.
It was out before Ruffey's got there.
Well, it was brought to my attention last week, and that's the first time I'd been through that road in months, uh, on down twenty-two. And I noticed it when I came up through there, so I honestly cannot tell you how long it's been down.
Uh, you, you think it, you, I mean, we're gonna get the quote back anyway.
Right.
You know, we do what we want to, but, uh, in your opinion, is it, is it, it's, it's there for a safety, to bring awareness, safety right, you know?
It's a bad place, place to pull out if you're coming. And believe it or not, a lot of people use it as a cutoff coming down the hill on eighty-two. Instead of coming down and hitting twenty-two, that's a cutoff road, and they come down the bottom of that hill, and it's not a safe place to pull out anyway, but, you know, it costs.
You think we need one anyway?
I think we need one.
Now preferably, I do, I, I, I travel there frequently, I.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Preferably go that direction.
Well, if a log truck took it down, let's make sure to fly it high enough that that doesn't.
Well, I told he, make sure you got it sixteen feet or higher crossing that road, you know, uh.
It's, it's needed because of the little business there in the church flowing off eighty-two.
But he'll, he'll have us a, a quote by the next meeting, hopefully, and, you know, we can decide. I, I was hoping to have it today. Okay, uh, we have a request for a resolution commemorating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of our country. Do I have a motion that we, uh, honor our country with a resolution and a proclamation?
Uh, so move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Childers, second by Commissioner Hall. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? And of course that passes unanimously. And can I get a motion to approve the invoices for Thompson Tractor?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second Commissioner Perkins. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Abstain. I abstain.
Oh, one abstention.
Hey, don't put me on.
Now I'm making a motion with adjourned.
Motion Commissioner Bone, second.
By Perkins.
By Commissioner Perkins, all in favor of adjourned?